All set? All right, everyone, welcome. Just to remind everyone, we are being filmed. And cell phones, if we can put them on vibrate or shut them off, I appreciate it. We're gonna start off tonight at 7:00.
Sure. The first order of business is the approval of old, oh, excuse me, old and new business is the approval of the minutes from the November 9, 2017 meeting. I wasn't here for that meeting, so if anyone else would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Were you there?
I make a motion, which, November?
November 9, 2017.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the November 9 meeting.
All favor?
Aye.
Present.
All right. And the next one was the 11th?
That would be from, I have December 14, 2017.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, January 11, 2018. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11, 2018 meeting.
I second the motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're gonna move on to, did you want to say something, John, or?
I was, just to make a quick notation, your last meeting, some people here will probably observe something where we were, seemed like there was some confusion as to a specific project going forward at the last meeting, but what happened was, the reference was made to a location, 75 Nile Street. I went immediately after the meeting, went home and dug it out, because I thought this is what it was, but I wanted to be sure. And what happened was, this is a location that was abandoned, and the town was looking to move on with that very quickly, because it was a health hazard. Having done so, we voted the right, it didn't come in with the right notification, it was a, an extra part of the variance that was needed, so they came back with it in, from November to December, and it was approved. And the reason they had to do this, because the building was knocked down, was going to be knocked down and rebuilt, so that's the reason it had to be done that way. The case last week had nothing to do with that knocking down the house.
Last month.
That's it.
Yep. Okay. We're gonna move on to the continual hearing. Vice?
Yes. Let me just make sure I have it. Um, I lost Bert.
It's okay, no problem.
So, we are here on the, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, well, a continual hearing on Thursday, February 8, 2018, at 7:15 PM at Abington Town Office's 500 Willow Way, Abington, on the petition of George, where am I?
Well, this is for, um...
I thought we were doing Bert Street.
This is Bert Street.
Right. Oh, yes, okay.
You go.
Ah, yes. George Williams, trustee, Penn Realty Trust, 80 Washington Street, Norwell, for a finding pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 6, whether 17521, excuse me, 251 affords protection for development of a building lot which is over 5,000 square feet and has 51 feet of frontage at 155 Birch Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 54, lots 90 and 92, in the R20 zone.
Okay, yeah, to start this meeting off, I'd just like to give the floor to the build inspector, if you have anything to say or anything.
With regards to the application?
Yes.
48, Section 6, as I understand it, to the board, deals with combining, it deals with grandfathering a lot that existed prior to the change of a zoning, it became pre-existing, non-conforming, that is for 5,000 feet or greater, and with 50-foot of frontage or greater, which is for one and two-family dwellings only. And the, that doesn't appear to be what, it appears that on April 14, April of 2014, according to the assessor and some of the deed information that I was able to discern, and I'm not an expert, that it was co-joined with another piece of property. And I don't know if that's accurate or not, but it appears to me to be that way. The plan is confusing in that the plan shows assessor's descriptions, and the deeds have obviously legal descriptions, and there's nothing to put the two together, so to not be positive as to what it is I'm looking at. The plan also does not appear to show the ghosted lots, which would be on the, I don't know why. The plan also shows mail easements, and I would assume those still exist, from what I'm told, there's a walking path there, I think, as well.
Yes.
And the plan does not show, or match with the assessors, not that the assessors is necessarily be accurate, it's showing James Way as being a couple of 20-foot wide pieces, this is shown as 112, that could be well on the assessors, something could be incorrect there, but it shows that it is, been taken off of this plan here, and I, I would, I don't see, and I could be missing it, a court decision to discontinue. I don't have that as well, and I don't know whether that is. So, these would be some questions that I would think the board would want to ask the applicant with regards to, presumably, before you get into the plan, specifically 48, Section 6, has this been conjoined, I guess, and, on April, as the assessor, and one of the deeds appeared to have shown, and if so, how is it they feel that this, they, at that point have, as I understand the law, have given up their grandfathered rights, right there? Those are some questions that I feel that the board should be, might ask the applicant.
So, there are a lot of questions still, I mean...
Okay. For the record, I'm Walter Sullivan. I'm a lawyer from Norwell, and I represent the applicants, George Williams and his wife, Jen Williams, who are here with us tonight. Also with me is John Dwayne, a lawyer from Quincy. I'm not entirely clear exactly what lot the building inspector is referring to. What we're talking about is Assessor's Lot 92, and I've set out the two adjoining lots next to it on my letter as Exhibits B and C, and from my review of the registry of deeds, I could find no deed or plan that indicates any merger occurred with those lots. That's really where we're seeking a finding tonight, is just Lot 92, which has 51 feet of frontage and contains 3.08 acres. It was at one point in the same title with the McLean's, but in 1973, that lot was conveyed to Mr. Petrell, and he has conveyed it on occasion, back and forth to one of his entities. But, when it was conveyed to Mr. Petrell, the frontage was 51 feet, there were no minimum frontage requirements in Abington at that time, as is indicated in my letter, and it contains 3.08 acres. So, it's our position, and I hear what the building inspector is saying, but I don't know what deed to which he makes reference, that we have no deed out of it, or no recorded plan, which indicates that it ever merged. It was never held in common ownership after it left the McLean's.
Would be, I'm just looking at the assessors, and I'm showing, and he could be incorrect, that nine, not, Assessor's Lot 92 is co-joined with 90.
So, the plan we're looking at, Mr., um...
90 and 92.
Yeah, so 90, we're not talking about, because that's the backland. We were here looking at 92 purposes of frontage, so at one point...
It's 90 and 92.
Excuse me, sir?
But it is 90 and 92.
Okay, so if they had joined 90 and 92, it doesn't change our frontage. We're here just trying to get a...
Doesn't change your frontage, but it changes your grandfathering. It negates your grandfathering.
See, I don't believe that's accurate. I believe that, that that doesn't, you're not make, we're not making it more non-conforming, okay?
No, that's not the way the law reads, and I, I...
Respectfully disagree.
With respect to that, I'm not an attorney, and you are, and I would suggest that the board would put that towards the counsel for, um...
Yeah, that's...
For their opinion with regards to that, because I'm reading it right in here, 48, 6, pretty clear.
No, and just to back up, we're here because you, you, I think, helping the applicant raise the issue, that we wanted to be sure that there wasn't a merger issue, and for that, we're grateful, and, and so, I, I understand what you're saying about 90 and 92, and we don't, we don't dispute they're in the same title. But I think under 48, Section 6, as I understand it, you have to show that we made it more non-conforming, and that's not the case. And, and so, I think that what we were looking for was a finding that 92 is in fact grandfather protected, and the building inspector, as I understand him, he can certainly speak for himself, is saying that when 90 and 92 came into the same ownership, that 92 then became non-conforming, and I don't believe that that's accurate.
They lost their grandfathered rights. If you had put a, if you had taken 90, and when they were not co-joined, and put a structure on it, one or two-family, as 48, Section 6 reads, and then added 90 to that after the fact, that would be a lot, but the isolated Lot 92 is of in itself, for the one and two-family, the only grandfathered piece, as soon as you touch it, as I read the, but I would let counsel, our town's counsel, that's how I've been advised, and that's how I read that, but I could be wrong.
I mean, we could, we could look at it different ways, and we could continue, if you want, or we could consult our lawyer, either one, or we can, we could just continue with this right now.
Yes, one moment.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, we would like to, we would like to have an opportunity to have town council look at it.
Our town council?
Yes, please.
Now, we've already continued this once, so where do we stand on?
You need a mutual agreement between the two parties.
And they sign off.
With regards to the timeline.
So, the clock starts.
And again, we're trying to make sure that this is correct, because we don't want to go forward and not have this correct. And again, to the audience, I apologize, but again, we're not gonna go forward without having everything, all the paperwork correct, all right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think if the townspeople are here tonight, at the very least, if any of them want to speak, they should be allowed to speak as a public meeting. But I would actually ask, what exactly is the applicant asking for? Because I read Section, Chapter 48, Section 6, is that to do, and I asked the counsel, is that to do with a structure, pre-existing structure, and whether it's there or not? And is that structure a one- or two-family home, or is it any structure?
Well, I, so...
Can I read the statute? And maybe, why don't we read the statute, so the people speak?
Okay.
So, I'm not gonna read the whole statute, but I see that any reconstruction, extension, or structural change of such structure, an alteration of a structure, and they talk about when it begins, except for alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change, to a single or two-family resident, residential structure, does not increase non-conforming nature of said structure. So, is this section about whether something is conforming or non-conforming, and is it to do with a one- or two-family house, or is it any building?
The question we were seeking, essentially a finding for, before we moved forward with our application, was that we had been, we had been granted grandfather protection with respect to our frontage. The building inspector is raising the question of when this lot, I think, if I understand correctly, merged with the bigger parcel.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you specifically, you see, because if you do actually look in your application, we do find that you want to construct eight condominiums, is that right?
Ultimately, we will refile, we will file for that, but we're not there yet, yes.
Right. So, instead of the normal application we have, with a plan showing eight to 11 condominiums, and asking for a variance or a special permit, and asking maybe to join the lots, something that we actually got in our last meeting, if you remember, somebody wanted to join lots and put a house on a vacant lot. Instead of that, we get a rather obtuse legal question, which admittedly is under finding, whether it's a non-conforming structure. But my question to you is, isn't that section really just for a one- or two-family house?
Well, I, I'm not really sure...
I don't know the answer to that.
Right, well, and I don't read it that way, but I think the issue that I hear from the building inspector is, have...
No, I don't want to, the building inspector's already laid out what his issue is. We can already move, we already believe that there are, I mean, the building inspector believes that there are some weaknesses in your application, and that we may not be able to move further, and that's why the chairman said we may want to continue, we may want to get a legal opinion. I'm just asking what you're actually asking for, and if, I mean, you really want to build the condos, right?
Ultimately, and we will file an application for that, but we were looking for guidance from the ZBA, that we have grandfather protection before we invest in that type of an application. And it was the building inspector, who I think, in aiding the applicant, brought the issue up.
Right.
So, that's why we came here.
So, basically, what we stand at right now is, we need to find out everything, get everything on the table before, there's no questions. We need to get everything on the table and get everything proper, so we can make a decision on this. So, either you can withdraw, or you can continue. So, you are, you are willing to continue, correct?
We would like to continue.
Okay. And would we like to continue?
I don't have a problem.
We'll continue.
I have a problem with a hearing where there are so many townspeople, and it's not actually opened up to at least hear the townspeople. You can hear them, you can then close the hearing, and then you can go forward, you can ask the applicant to supplement, but I don't see why the people who, this is the second time they've come, haven't been...
I agree with you, but the, the way that this works is that we have to have all the, everything proper before we can vote on something. And again, they have the opportunity to withdraw, or they have the opportunity to continue. This is what we went through last time. But there are questions out there that have to be answered, brought up by the build inspector, and it's just the way it has to go.
Although, wait, is this a hearing? Are we, are we on the hearing on this application now?
Yes.
And we have heard from them, right?
Yes.
So, why don't we open it to the public?
Yep.
Why, you know, this is an open meeting issue, this is very serious, there are people here, I don't know if one of them wants to actually be heard, but there's a lot here, and I don't see why we can't hear them as well as the...
I'm not saying that we can't hear them, I'm just saying, this is the way we have to do it.
And I think the concern is, I mean, while we appreciate this is a second week in a row, or second month in a row that people have been here, there's an open question whether or not this project's even legally viable.
Exactly.
So, to have people sort of come up and express their opinion on whether or not they want eight condominiums built on this, 11 condominiums, built in the structure before we even know if there's gonna ever be any...
But that is what's before us.
Again, we're not, we're not for this, and we're not against this, so...
Lot 90 and Lot 90, their opinion on whether Lot 90 and Lot 92 are joined, and whether or not the merger doctrine is applicable to this case.
As a point of order, Mr. Bergen, I'd like to point out, just to address your concern, if I may, is, there will be many more public hearings if we go forward, where anybody can choose or not choose to be here.
Well, actually, this is really an issue for the chairman. I do not see why you can't open it up to the public now, to hear them.
It's because, at this point right here, we're not at, this is not...
Well, we have, we have a...
The point where we open it up to hearing, we're gonna have it continue, you know, it's not the way it's done. If we were done with the table, and done with the petition, then we would open it up to the floor. That's how it goes.
If we were done with the hearing, is that what you said?
No, I mean, done with the petition, done with the, done with the board.
We have a petition, we have a petition in front of us. I myself don't really understand what the poor chap is asking for, but, but we do have a petition in front of us, it has been advertised, I think everybody understands that. So, we have an issue before us, there are people here, why don't you continue, why don't you hear what has to be heard and just continue it? Or, you know, if you want to go forward on it, you can make a decision or ask them to withdraw, but that's part of the hearing. Part of the hearing is allowing people to talk on this. If the applicant's allowed to speak at this meeting, the people who are here are allowed to speak at this meeting.
I do, I do feel the same way, I understand what you're saying, but again, we are hearing what they have to say as petitioners. We have to make a decision as, as a board, and then that's when you hear the floor.
No, we make a decision, our public gives their input, we don't make a decision...
Well, that's fine, but we're not gonna be making a decision tonight.
Right.
So...
Right, I agree, we can't make a decision tonight, it's very complicated.
Yes, it is.
But we can at least hear from all sides.
I, I feel it too, I, I do feel bad for everyone coming here, I do, but everything has to be done proper before we can make a decision.
But when do these people get a chance to speak? After you make a decision? That's obviously not, that's why you're saying, right?
So, what, you want me to open up to the floor?
Yeah, I mean, you probably won't get anybody here, because, you know, we're not...
How does the board feel about that?
If you want to open it up to the floor on this specific, anybody's specific opinion on the legal issue of whether or not they feel that two lots have joined, in our position on whether or not a finding is required in that area, then that's fine. If anyone wants to talk about their overall opinions about whether or not this area is suitable for condominiums, I don't think that would be part of the debate.
Right, because what we have here is, petition is asking for a certain thing, that's what we have.
So, I agree with your need to have people be heard, but let's not put the cart before the horse, and go down a road where people are getting into topics which aren't, which aren't before the board at this time.
Well, what's before the board is whether 175251 affords protection for development of a building lot which is over 5,000 square feet and has 51 feet of frontage. Would we agree with that?
Yes.
So, anybody who sees that that was advertised, and has opinion about that, at the address, which is 155 Birch Street, which is in an R20...
So, we're gonna open it up to the floor, and then they're gonna ask questions to the lawyers, and then ask questions to us?
We're gonna ask, I don't think really we should be asking questions, we should be just getting the input at the moment from everybody, and if you want to ask questions, that's fine, but at the very least, you have to let everybody speak what they want to.
I would, I would stress highly that the debate, or the topic should be limited to, the, the feedback should be limited to the specific issue...
Again, there's no decision gonna be made tonight, that's it.
And if it strays outside of that, I request the chairman and the floor debate, or comments.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the floor.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
Counsel.
State name and...
Sean Reynolds, 19 Charles Street, Abington, Mass. As well, former member of the board. As far as the combining of the property, I know a plan, and a lot of things don't get filed, the last time this was here before the board, it was withdrawn, and the property was referred, was referenced as a complete 155 Birch Street, and that was in 2005.
Can you enter that in evidence?
Were reviewed. This is my only copy, so I'd like to have that back, because it took a long time to find that. And then here, it was actually under an LLC by Sean Riley, and I'd make those available to you as well, come...
Thank you, appreciate it.
At that time. This was a, a lodge hearing back then. Basically, originally, they were fighting for somewhere around 30 condos, because they said it was 3.1 acres. Then they settled around 18, and then it became three houses. Three houses, exactly what the zoning material states. And that plan was fought for the whole time. This was how it was referenced, in terms of the whole lot, the 3.1. And in addition to that, one of the things that we did as a group, was because they were ignoring the wetlands, we had the USI Record Engineers come in and force them to delineate.
I go to a point of order, I thought we were gonna talk just about merger.
That is part of the merger.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, you've gotta let the people speak, there's no points of order, this is not a court of law, loves any of you.
I, I thought I heard the majority say that they wanted to deal with a specific issue, Mr. Bergen.
You know what, Mr. Chairman?
All right, okay, all right. Let's, let's, let's hold on a minute.
I'm trying to save you some money.
Let's just hold on, let's listen to...
That is part of the merger, because the wetlands are so significant in this area, that that indicates where you build, so it's absolutely part of the merger. That's why they needed to show, look, we have this much land to waste, we need to build on it. And then here is my settlement, because I retained a portion of it through adverse possession. And again, it refers to the total LLC, which is Delta, if you want to reference, counselor, D Ernest Petrell, trustee of Delta Trust Real Estate. He stood in my backyard and looked at the whole parcel while I stood with him. And that is a settlement to my portion, that I retained, because I had been maintaining. So, as far as it being a joint, it was a joint, and it was approved for three homes. As you enter in, I don't know if you have the map in front of you, but as you entered in, to the right, one would be built over a bridge into the left-hand corner. Now, I offer these as evidence of it being merged, and given that we're allowed to pursue it even further, and maybe get Mr. Riley's records, we will see that it was approved for the three houses.
Okay.
And you need, those are your only copies, correct?
These are my own.
I can go make copies right now.
Make sure we get a copy to the petitioner.
Okay, right there, a lot of information, okay? I'll have to close it to the floor right now.
No, I'm gonna object again, because has anybody else had a chance to speak?
I have a question.
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, he's the guy who...
My name's Dan Greeno, I live at 163 Birch Street, I own the house across the street at 158 Birch Street, directly across where this land is, where they want to put the road. You know, we know it was Ms. McLean's, back in the day, she sold it to Mr. Petrell, because Mr. Petrell sold his right-of-way when he sold Davis's house. He never broke his right-of-way off to this land. So, in essence, he landlocked himself in the 1970s. They tried to go down James Path, Petrell, in the 70s. We blocked them, they tried to do it in one day, no permit, no nothing. I end up, I have a deed for 20 feet of James Path, that went to court, everything else. It was one by Mr. Magnuson, who lived next door, he got 20 feet, I got 20 feet. Ms. McLean sold Mr. Petrell 50 feet, when she was moving out of the neighborhood, a little dig before she left. So, like, you know, they want elevated road, four feet, so their elevation from the street, I took a transit, my, my yard is like 47 inches lower than the street, okay? It's gonna be a pool. Aris, my neighbor, he's gonna, the original, the original right-of-way is going in there, so he's got a four-foot bank on this side of the house, he's gonna have a four-foot bank on that side of the house. In essence, it's gonna make his lot apart, okay? The road where they want to go in, could, maybe they tell me how close it is to the side of my house? Anyone?
I think he's saying this one.
11 feet.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but those lots, obviously, were never together.
Okay.
Because it was, it was, it was Ms. McLean's, and that was his last way to try and get in there. He sold his right-of-way, he tried to blow in on James Path, he came back another time in the early 70s. We've been going through this for 40 years, since I was a kid, and they didn't have enough frontage, they needed 80-something, 85 feet of frontage at the time, they shot him down there, they wouldn't let him go in there. So, I mean, we've been going on and on with this, but where they think their property line is, is 11 feet from the side of my house, literally, okay? 11 feet, I don't know what the zoning is, but I know your, that can't be so close to your driveway, there's a number of issues, you know, fire trucks, how they're gonna get in there, I'm talking 11 feet, let alone the drainage and everything else, the traffic on Birch Street, but it was never a continuous lot. Mr. Petrell used to use the Endiman Road Street for dump trucks, and then they would fill in the wetlands. If you walk through there, it's all old tar, one of the Kelleher's, Mr. Kelleher used to do driveways, whatever he done during the day, they would drive over to that wetlands and dump them in there, okay? This land is not buildable land, it hasn't been, it never has been, okay? They've been fighting it since the early 70s.
I appreciate that, that's, that's good information, I appreciate, I gotta close it to the floor now, close it to the floor. Okay. Okay, let's go back to the board here. So where do you stand?
We would, we would ask for a continuance if the board would grant us one.
All right, I will grant, we will.
Make a motion to grant.
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant a mutual continuance.
Who's the voting member?
You?
Make a motion to grant a mutual continuance until the next hearing on March.
Uh, March 8th.
March 8th.
And this doesn't take anything away, we've already continued this once, so.
They're going to sign a.
Okay.
Second.
Hall of Fame.
Hi.
All right. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just let everyone know that there'll be no.
No notification. We, we would like to get more copies of that, I think, Nancy.
I can do it right now.
Well, no, I'm, again, all we're trying to do here is get it correct, okay? I do apologize. I, I don't even know why I'm apologizing. I shouldn't be apologizing. But the thing is that we have to do this correctly, and I do appreciate your input, totally appreciate what you've given us. And we'll just go forward with this. Again, you're not going to be notified. And what do we say for a date?
March 8th.
March 8th. Okay, let me sign that.
Today's date, yes, 30.
Your state person, 30?
Yes, yeah, I'll make them.
Thank you.
I'll make them now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wait a couple, will that take a little, a couple minutes here?
What time on date?
Seven o'clock again. It's going to be the first thing.
All right, we'll all see you.
Crazy Irish.
Oh, that's my, that's my real Irish. Doesn't it look like you should be excluded as a reasonable person, that you might be swayed? There's that room at the end, you might want to go and talk. Is that what you mean?
Okay. No, it's okay, we'll take a little break.
No, because then you're excluding them to rebut it, so, and it's going to be publicized that we're just having a meeting, and that's the rules now because of the state? That's an open meeting violation, and that's why you'd like to be able to do that, but no, we can't. Well, you know, you know Sean? You should sit with him, give him some information, and he can write it, or you can write it and he can read it, or you can submit it to us as a board. No, but if someone wants to submit it to the board and they can't make it, that will be read into the minutes. Okay, so it will be perpetually held with us, so that, you know, and the records too, so that might be what. Does that help you, what you're saying, if you can't make it?
It's an Irish. It's like North against South.
Exactly. That's what I would suggest. Yep, that's what I would suggest. Now, Nancy, you going to make a copy for all of us?
I.
You'll make a copy of all of that for us?
I will.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Give the marshal a minute.
I spent a lot of time with this lawyer on this. Another thing I learned, very interesting for future. I told you about Jim, the guy that works with him. He says to bring up Wilmington, this is what they used all the time, is they go. Intent, exact words, may I have to do it? Give me two seconds. Show me if any. Just tell, and they.
He didn't make his notes.
And he doesn't back it up.
I can always express my legal opinions.
I saw your hand come up, and I said, oh.
I know.
So want to continue on?
I'll just give them one more second for people to head out.
There you go. You turned the TV off.
I just don't want to be asked.
Is the TV off or off?
What? No, that one was on.
That's on, I mean.
Appeals, that would be Monday. I'm up in the select zone. Yeah, yeah, but it'd be, it'd be in there on Monday. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, at being 7:35, we're going to move on to the next petition.
The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 8, 2018, at 7:05 PM at Abington Town Offices, 500 Plinowitz Way, Abington, on petition of Murray S. Pisagnelli and Lisa M. McEwen, 50 Isabel Street, Abington, for a front setback variance under 175-29, and front and side setback finding per Chapter 40A, Section 6, 175-29, 50 Isabel Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 4, Lot 101 in the R-30 zone.
How you doing?
Good.
Good?
How you guys doing?
Good. I drove by the house today. Really tight in there. That's a tight lot.
On, on mine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, they packed us in.
But I noticed there was another house right up the street that has a two, you know, two stories, so.
Yeah, we, uh, we got a growing family right now.
There you go. All right.
So we're trying to make some room. Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Carter. I, I work for the Russell.
Hold on a second.
Shut the door. Shut the door. Shut the door. Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here, as I said, my name's John Carter, with the Russell Wheatley Company, and I am here with Nick and Lisa Pisagnelli from their residence at number 50 Isabel Street. The project itself is located on the easterly side of Isabel Street, located in the R-30 medium-density residential district, minimum lot areas of 30,000 square feet and frontage of 110 feet. Our lot, our existing lot, does not meet, it's pre-existing non-conforming. If you looked throughout the entire subdivision there, you would find that none of the lots in that, in that subdivision would make the R-30 requirements for frontage, lot area, or lot width. The existing house that's shown on the, on the plan was constructed somewhere around 1950, and as you can, as, as you can see on the plan, it does not meet the requirements, setback requirements for the R-30 district, in that the setback requirements, the frontage, the front setback is 35 feet, side setback is 20, and rear is 30. What they are requesting is to be allowed to put a second floor on the existing house, which is going to require a finding. They're not going to go any closer to the side yard nor the fronts, the front yard, but they are going to go up, and so in this case, we would be requesting a, a finding for the second floor additions.
So just, sorry, can I just jump in?
Sure.
So they're not actually changing, it's just going up?
It's just going up. It's, it's just going up.
For both the front and side yard setbacks?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Well, no.
With the exception, no, no, I haven't, well, if, there is going to be a, there is going to be a, what they're going to ask for is a.
Five foot, right?
Yeah, but that is what they're asking the finding for.
Yeah.
They're also going to be asking a variance to construct a, to construct a front porch.
Yeah, I see that, yep.
Okay.
The, the position of the house requires a variance for their front porch, or for anything actually in the, in the front of the house. They would like to put a front door. There is not a front door in the existing house as it stands right now. There's a door on the side, and then they have a door in the rear, and what they'd like to do is, is have a front door. In this, in this town, they would be allowed to put a front door with a set of stairs, but if they wanted to do anything else, as far as any kind of a roof line to cover the door, they would have to come in front of you for a variance, because of, because of the location of the house. In this case, they're asking for a, they're asking to put a front porch on the house to make it a lot more aesthetically pleasing. That being said.
Do you have any pictures of the actual house look?
I do. Yes, yes, yes. Nick has a pitch for you.
So basically, the addition's going up, you need findings for the addition, and then you just want to put on a five-foot front porch, and you need a variance.
That's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah, see, see, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what it looked like, that's what it looks like now.
Hmm, okay.
So it, it doesn't look any different than anything in the houses around there from what I saw. It just seems to me that the road is closer than that. It just seems like it's.
It's, it does, it does, but it, but it's actually that the, the street itself is not centered on the right-of-way.
Is that how it is? Because it looks awfully.
It does. It gives you the impression that, that, that it is a lot closer to the street line than it is.
It's actually 18 feet, huh?
Yeah.
It's actually, the house itself right now is actually 23 feet.
Wow, it just doesn't look that.
It's five, with the, with the, with the, with the five-foot porch on it, we would, we would be 18, 18 feet, 17 and a half on one side.
Okay.
John is correct. If this was conforming in the front yard, and he wanted to put a portico stairs and was extending it into the front yard setback, that would require a variance. However, pre-existing non-conforming, one and two family.
Right.
If you are intensifying an existing non-conforming, all you need is a finding. And in this structure here, he is intensifying, and I agree with him, with regards to the side yards, because they are both non-conforming, and he's going up, he's creating more non-conforming. It's increasing an existing non-conforming.
Yep.
In addition, the front porch that they're looking to extend five feet, I believe it says here, towards the front yard, that front yard setback is already pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
It's not a new non-conformity.
Right.
So that is a finding as well. There's less relief you'd be giving, because in my opinion, the front yard variance he's asked for here is not required. Asking for less relief. Less relief is needed, in my opinion, than he is asking for. And your only determination is whether or not it is more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
If it were, just to clarify, a new non-conformity, that would require a variance, but we are only dealing with existing non-conformities.
But he's intensi, he's intensifying the existing non-conforming.
He's intensifying an existing, which requires a fine, an existing non-conforming, an existing, and it shall not, the languages shall not be more detrimental.
Right.
Than existing structure to the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's your finding. There is actually less relief than is being asked for.
Right, so there is no, no variance, correct? No variance being asked?
No, there's a variance is being asked for, it's not required.
Correct, because it's not.
We have to hold on it and put it as no if we decide to go that route.
Yeah, you grant the, you would grant the.
The finding.
Front and side setback finding, period.
Right, that's it.
Exactly. We have to say no to the first one.
And you would deny the front setback variance, because it's not needed.
I mean, I think we brought, I think we brought this up last week, though.
Yes, we did.
In terms of whether we should deny the variance, or whether, because he doesn't need it, he should withdraw the variance, just in case you hit some snafu.
Okay, you can do it that way.
Either way, yes, just.
withdraw the variance sounds better than.
And he still could go for, if we approve it.
Yeah.
Now, I, I'd like to add some comments to it, because I spent some times, and probably the neighbors probably thought there was a guy driving back and forth.
Were those the calls?
Probably. What is that on the side, as you drive into your driveway, that, like, you can't do anything with?
It's not a piece of land, isn't it?
Well, no, I think.
On the side yard?
You'll have ten, yes.
Uh, that's, that's our property.
That, but you got it fenced off, that, when it comes out?
No, that's actually, so there's a big subdivision, there's a big parcel that became condos adjacent to us, and that fence was a continuation.
There, there comes into some of the hardship part of it. That's what I was trying to figure out. No, we don't need a hardship, I understand.
Right, exactly.
You looked at me like that, but prior to.
If it was needed.
More detrimental, only then you have to deal.
Right, so prior to it, but also driving around there, just to correct you, there is one around the curb street that is over the required frontage.
Yep.
It's probably like 120 right around that end.
Okay.
But having said that, that whole neighborhood, to me, was an R-20 at some point. I don't have any proof of that, but it is pretty well con, but the guy across the street did go up, which is pretty much what you want to do. And the next street over in your backyard, again, people probably thought I was Beeping Tom and all this, but I noticed all these buildings were pretty substantial compared to a few small ones, so that had been developed as time went on, much like you're looking for it. So in my opinion, I, I don't see it as being a non-character, changing the character of the neighborhood. Having said that, that's where I'm going with that, and I'll let it go with that, because we got to still on the floor. Mr. Jennings?
You all set?
Yep.
All right, very good. We're going to turn to the audience, open it up.
Yeah, well, I'm a neighbor in.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Ed Campbell, 58 Isabel Street, and we, we support them whatever they want to do, because he told me what he was doing, and I accept it.
All right, great.
So you're approving.
So you're approving, yeah. All right, that sounds good. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Nice.
We were glad to.
And nobody else in the close, oh, do you want to speak?
Yeah, Richard.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. How's Matt, good?
Good, you're doing good.
Steve Bradbury, I live at 49, and across the street, I'm the one with him, across the street. Again, they're, they're just trying to better them, their, their own property, which in turn is going to better everybody.
Right, exactly.
You know, I, I went through it. I know what they're doing. I've been there, I've been before you guys, and it's, you know, it's a stressful process, and, you know. All right, uh, good, uh, we're gonna, uh, turn to the audience, open it up.
Yeah, well, I'm a neighbor and, uh...
Uh, can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Ed Campbell, fifty-eight Isabel Street, and, uh, we, we, uh, support them whatever they wanna do because he told me what he was doing and I accept it.
All right, great.
So I know...
So you're approving?
Oh, you're approving, yeah. All right, that sounds good, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We were glad to.
Uh, and, um, nobody else in the close, oh, do you want to speak?
Yeah, Richard.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. How's Matt, good?
Good, you're doing good.
Um, uh, Steve Bradbury, I live at, uh, forty-nine and, uh, across the street, I'm the one with, across the street, um, again, they, they, they're just trying to better them, their, their own property, which in turn is gonna better everybody.
Right, exactly.
You know, I, I went through it, I know what they're doing, I've been there, I've been before you guys, and it's, you know, it's a stressful process and, you know, uh, I support, I mean, they've already improved the property as far as I'm concerned from what it was, I've lived here since ninety-three, so...
Right, yeah.
Um, but yeah, again, you know, I don't think anybody's against it, you know, so...
All right, thanks Steve, thanks. All right, I'm gonna close it to the, the floor and bring it back to the board. Uh, what do we think?
The only thing I would ask, if the petitioners agree to withdraw their request for, uh, the, the front setback variance under one seventy-five twenty-nine.
You should do that now.
Yeah, 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 that's no problem.
That's no problem, are you, make sure that gets in there and, um...
Um, in that case then, I will make a motion to approve the petition of Murray and Pisagnelli and Lisa M. McEwen, fifty Isabel Street, for a front and side setback finding per chapter forty-eight, section six, one seventy-five twenty-nine at fifty Isabel Street. The property is located on accessories map forty, lot one oh-one in the R thirty zone, uh, the basis for this finding being that they are only increasing a current non-conformity.
They are complying with the finding.
Yes, they're complying with the requirements of a finding and we've determined it won't be any more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Correct.
Got an answer? Okay.
I, uh, second.
All favor?
Aye.
All set, good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you gentlemen.
Take care.
And thank you neighbors.
Thank you neighbors, good to see you.
Lovely. All women.
Take care.
They're gonna spend a lot of time in this court.
There you go, that's a great idea, yeah. Take care.
You too.
All right, take care. All right, I guess we are...
I'd make a motion to continue the review of the proposed zoning by law amendments until we're able to board.
Um, I got a question about that, um, that's a good, uh, good idea, but when do we need to turn these in?
Planning, don't they have their public hearing in March, Marshall?
Um, I have a few, March fifth, they asked me to, uh, meet with them, I don't know what it was, I just got an email.
Yeah, cause originally it was January thirtieth.
But I don't know what the, uh, the meeting was, whether to discuss them with me or was, whether, what it was about.
Will turn them in?
Well, why don't we go over a few of them?
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Over the ones from...
I do agree, cause, um...
Marshall had.
Again, I don't, I haven't, um, seen any of these, so I need to take a look at them, so if we want, we should go over them.
Would it not be better to actually continue our hearing so we do get a chance to read them?
Well, the only ones I think we should, is the, we should have done that back in November, we postponed until December, never brought them up, we should have done it last meeting.
Motion denied.
I'm sorry.
I tried.
But where are these?
There are only three of them, he has three, I think.
Are we looking at three for Marshall? We're just looking at Marshall.
We don't actually need them.
Three for me, I had other ones with signs, et cetera.
Okay, let me...
The sign thing is gonna be redone completely, I understand, so I didn't...
Yeah, I wanna think...
So, so there are three of these?
I just threw three in, then I had an issue.
We're not looking at the other ones, I, I, I had a whole lot of them.
I did too, I still have them, I read them all. But may I say something, uh, number one, I wanna thank, uh, Andrew Cumming and Dennis to the sign review committee meeting, uh, town council did come to the first one, uh, right after that meeting and she added some stuff and then came back, uh, for our last meeting and she did a very good job of putting some more additional stuff and having said that, it's gonna go in front of the selectmen on the twelfth, so if anybody wants to show up on that, uh, and from there, that's as far as the sign, it's a complete overhaul.
A complete overhaul?
Yes.
Really?
Well, we tried doing it individually, you'd be picking this and someone say it's referenced here, it's referenced there, so we had asked town council to come up with a plan that had passed state muster as far as the attorney general and, uh, they did come up with a town, we used that as a template and, uh, that worked, then we could go from it, add to it, you know, like what applied to Abington versus this other town and, uh, but it was probably like twelve meetings, I, twelve, it's taken us since January of seventeen, so it's been a long process.
So what, what would we like to talk about, which, which ones?
Well, the ones his were like the carport and, uh, where is mine, geez, where'd I put them?
I mean, I have three here.
Yeah, that's it.
This one we're talking about?
The three. The first one being definitions, one seventy-five dash four, amend by adding to definitions and word usage, swimming pool, amend by...
Oh, great, yeah.
By including definition to see accessory use or structure and structure, and Mr. Adams will explain that.
Um, they have a separate rule for swimming pools, um, they, they, it comes under a situation where you're not allowed to put a swimming pool or a hot tub closer than ten feet to your, um, your deck, and a lot of people want a deck with a, uh, an above-ground pool right up to it.
Right.
Especially if the lot drops off, looks like the in-ground pool kind of thing.
Right.
Or a hot tub.
And, uh, this, this, or a hot tub in between, while you've got the back of the house and the garage sticks out a little in the back, you wanna kinda tuck the hot tub in there, and a hot tub, if it's over two feet deep, which they typically are, qualifies as a swimming pool, and it does have some separate things with regards to fencing, it doesn't require, but there's a top that has to go with it, fascism and all that, but you're not allowed to put it within ten feet of that corner of your house, you wanna be able to tuck it in there because you want some protection and privacy, or put it on your deck, this would, uh, allow that to take place, and that's why I had it, uh, worded like that.
Okay, makes sense to me.
The next one is, uh, um, to amend, uh, with the parking and, and whatnot, it says in the second line, um, variable, but the last three words of the second line, variable by planning board, now, I, I, I don't, variable sounds too much like variance, and I just wanna change it by closer than fifty feet, waiver by planning board.
Okay.
Waiver and variable is not something that should be written there, so that's why I put that in there.
What is it, just out of curiosity, what's requirement for a waiver, do they, is that the planning board requirement?
It's waiver by the planning board is not a variance, they're just gonna allow it, they can say, yeah, we allow, but they can't give variance because only you guys can.
In fact, town council used that in the signs review.
For that section there.
Yes, remember where, I think it was there.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay.
Okay.
Good point, though.
Next one?
I don't remember why I did this one.
Amend delete.
Amend deleting the current definition of detached accessory building, amend by replacing the definition to a detached accessory building, erect.
Is this, does this go back to the swimming pool one where you have excluding pools?
They go back to the swimming pool one, and the other one was, uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember what that one was, I, I'd have to look at, look, look back at it, that doesn't, jump out at me dimension, doesn't need to amend definition, detached accessory building may not be erected in the side or, I don't know, closer than ten feet in the side, go closer than ten feet in the side, amend by replacing that for a detached accessory building erected in the side. Oh, that's the pool one, I'm sorry, that's the pool one.
But this goes...
What I told you was the pool one was, oh, that is, that goes along with swimming pools as well.
Okay.
Um, that goes along with it as well, they should kinda be put together.
My only comment...
And the last one...
Wait a minute, you had a comment.
I was just gonna say, my only comment to that would be, it, just have it be excluding swimming pools, because that ties back into the definition of swimming pool.
It does say excluding swimming pools.
It just says pools.
It doesn't say pool?
I don't know.
Say swimming pools, what? Yeah?
Excluding pools.
Yeah, cause that could be misconstrued by other people, mean anything, a rental pool.
Yes, any pool.
Good idea.
Um, okay, okay, thank you. And the last one is, uh, um, what it is, is, what is a structure, and a structure says it has to have exterior walls, and right now, a, a carport does not qualify as a building. A building has a wall, uh, roof held up and, uh, by, so, walls, but it has to have enclosed walls, that's a building, and a building has, um, areas that it can be put, um, like a shed in the backyard, ten side, ten rear, whatever the front yard setback is, however, a structure, which is only what a, because it has this, a carport has no walls, can be put anywhere, you can put it literally, just like a swing set if you want, right in the front yard, and in parking, it says you can park a car under, uh, anywhere, uh, in your yard as long as it's in a carport, under a carport, so you can, literally if you wanted to, you can put a carport right in your front yard and put a car, a car right there, there's nothing I can do about it.
And...
And this prevents that.
And there are some towns in, recently, you didn't wanna hear that.
Uh, you know, it's your town.
Yep, it's a good point, it's our town, it's right.
I'm good with all those.
Okay, another problem, well, so, um...
I make a motion that we accept these, uh, proposal and pass it on that we as a board accepted Mr. Marshall's, Adams', uh, changes.
Mr. Marshall Adams, that accurate, I feel kinda...
I second it. I second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Uh, I got questions about the other stuff that we've been getting, um, town meeting articles, business development, proposals for use regulations, and, uh, who was the other one?
Are we still on film?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, all these ones that we just got, what, where are these going?
Well, maybe the question is, where do they come from?
Right, yes, um, we did a good, that's good.
Yes.
And it was one for, for the, uh, oh, help me out here, there's one more.
Yeah. Mr. Riley's. He says it, right.
Yeah, so it says to Mr. Riley.
It says there for Mr. Riley.
I'm just curious as to what we're supposed to do with it.
Yeah, we, we got all these things...
I went through them and there's some changes in there that I don't like.
Well, they reflect...
And they reflect back to us?
They, well, they reflect some cases that we did actually, uh, apparently, but I mean, the issue there, I mean, for a, for a, um, an article to come before the town, it has to be recommended by, you know, an employee, right?
Uh, no, it can come from a town's, uh, member of the town, I believe, with ten signatures.
With ten signatures, so...
With my office, I believe, I can, uh, have a lot.
You can just sue Sponti, yeah, cause you're, and then the other way is a board, so, um, so these are before us.
Right.
Are they before us to recommend to the town or...
I mean, there's one here for, for the, the mud zone, the mud, muppet zone?
Yes.
I know where that's coming from.
Yeah.
Uh, business zone.
Brand new.
And driveway.
Mr. Riley, it's, these are his.
These are all his?
Yes.
Explained.
So, and these are going to be just thrown in there and built up?
I think if we're gonna discuss them, that...
I talked with Sean about some of these, um, and not with regards to, uh, those different zones, and I did agree with Marion and I.
These, that's the ones you bring up.
Cause I know you sent something to...
Those, he agreed.
And, uh, yes, that's correct, yes, those, uh, I, uh, I went through with him, had, uh, we sugge, uh, Marion and myself suggested some changes which, uh, he incorporated into what, uh...
What came out, this, these?
Mr. Shepherd has, and, uh, you know, I, I didn't have an issue with that, so I went through those.
You went, yeah, but you didn't go through, I don't think, the whole section, there's four pages, cause I have some questions like on one seventy-five forty-eight.
I mean, these are changes that are going in front of the town?
They go in front of, the next board, they go to, uh, selectmen, then planning, I think it is, or planning then selectmen, and then it goes in front of...
I, I know you asked a couple of questions about some things, but then all these changes came.
There's where I have a problem, when you're changing districts, I think that one should be a committee, uh, if you're changing business.
Business development, is that what we're talking about?
But I feel like that's something that would be more coming from the planning board as opposed to us.
Well, I think so.
Yes, but at the same time that we, they're, they're looking for our input if we have any.
So, so now they wanna change from technology, business...
That's why I have a question.
Back to businesses.
So we're gonna keep on flipping that area?
There's some interesting places.
I mean, that was fought for, that was fought for, that was...
And guess what?
There's also about marijuana, did you see the marijuana dispensaries?
No, I didn't, I, I mean, I...
Get them loud in there.
I think we have to continue this part, but, um...
But I just wanna bring them up, I mean, these three things seem to be coming from, you know, an area that we need to really get interested in this.
Yes, um, the letter says that, you know, people are bringing up these issues, it really is to change, I think, you know, decisions that were made in the zoning board, but we're just, we actually are just a regulatory board.
Where did he talk to on this board?
Well, this is really for the planning board, I think.
Yeah, but he said he talked to every board, he talked to the boards.
No, we never, we didn't get talked to, we got these handed to us.
I know, did he talk to you beforehand?
No one talked to me.
I mean, may, maybe there are changes that have to be done, a wind farm, the technology district, maybe there are changes that have to be done, but I think maybe we should give, um, you know, them an opportunity to talk to us about it.
Well, it was posted, she did send it out.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't think, I haven't read the whole thing, I don't feel...
I think we all should read the whole thing because it's affecting us, this stuff in here is zoning.
And it affects the town.
And I think, one question I had, I haven't read it, was, um, does it affect, it's that, so it's obviously, um, changes to help raise people that were before the board change, but there's a health, I don't think that's coming down, so one of the big constructions is in North Abington, um, now, this is a construction that we're not really involved in, the, you know, paper mill, um, changing into...
The old New England art building.
Turn it to apartments or, or condos or something like that.
But the planning board, because of the, uh, size of structure, or I think is in charge of all of that, and I actually was one, I, I saw one of their hearings on that, I got one of their hearings, but, um, but it is gonna come before us on one issue, and that's on parking.
Always parked.
And there is something about parking there, so we're talking about, uh, you know, so I, I don't know if that's relevant, um, so I think...
Who's your lawyer for that?
Pardon? Well, you know, they're talking about putting...
Oh, wait a minute, that's right.
They're talking about putting, I don't know, is it a hundred or eighty or a hundred park?
Hundred and fif, a hundred and thirty, and then they, in the newspaper, they said it would probably be cut back to a hundred to a hundred and fifteen.
Did they get the water? Did they get approved?
Water now.
Did they, did they get approved though for the water, you know?
I mean, the New England art building.
A hundred and twenty.
It's kinda weird they were getting this stuff in front of us and we're not really paying attention to it, guys, so I think we need to pay attention to this, this is, you know, I, we can, we can say, oh, it's gonna go another board here and there, but this stuff is ours, it's, we're gonna live with it.
Well, it's about us, I mean, some of the cases... Well, it's about us, I mean, some of the cases...
It's all, a lot of it is about us, but the bottom line is that, uh...
Because they agree.
That we don't agree with it, it's just being thrown at us, so, I mean...
You won't get any...
I mean, I agree with everything that, that Marshall's brought up that needs to be changed, that's fine.
Well, that's a separate issue, he brought those up.
Right, but, I mean, the, these here are...
Changing districts to me requires...
But like Andrew says, I think this is really for the planning board, rather than, I mean, we're a regulatory board.
I mean, do we have a word in this, at all, or is this just...
We can vote to either...
Send it to the planning board, we can recommend afterwards, we do not like it, or make changes, we can do that, say, we, we as a board do not agree with...
When is this going, before the town, all these changes?
That's where we're trying to...